--here who can make it. So we're going to open up the meeting of our council as a whole today, the 31st of January already, and as we have a roll call.
Calling the roll, Mr. Germana.
Here.
Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Schron is absent today. Ms. Conwell.
Here.
Mr. Jones. Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Simon.
Here.
Ms. Conley is also absent today. Mr. Greenspan.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Brady.
President.
Give a corn.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, has there anybody signed in yet for public comment?
No one has signed in to speak.
Okay. First, I want to thank everybody for being here today on a off Tuesday, but I thought it was really important that we started a dialogue on what's happening with the Inner Belt Bridge project and tangential issues which include the turnpike going on right now. So I wanted to have Public Works Director Bonnie T. One, if you may, come up and give us a little bit of history as you know it and currently what's happening with that project that was supposed to be moving forward.
Thank you, Bonnie T. One, Public Works Director. What I was thinking about proposing or presenting today was excerpts of a presentation that Craig Heba Brand from ODOT presented to NAWACA. It would have been a little over a week ago on Friday. And just go through certain pieces of what's happening on the current project on the westbound bridge and also kind of give you an update of what I know of the eastbound bridge. First of all, this is the westbound bridge. This is the bridge that's under construction right now. The original contract cost was $287 million. This particular project was the first quality-based, value-based design-build project in the state that ODOT led. It was also the largest single contract that they ever sold. The project is about 40% complete. They've had payments of well over $100 million. The design is pretty much complete, 95%. Construction documents have been complete. This is a design-build, which basically means that they start the design or they start design when they have some buildable units available and approved for design. They start the construction before the final plans are done. This basically expedites the design and the build part of the project because there was a sense of urgency of replacing the existing structure. You know, I thought it would be best because designs weren't started at the time that we present this project as a design-build project so we can hurry up and get the new bridge under construction. This is kind of an overview of, and I'm sure it's hard for you to see, but it's just not the main span over the Cuyahoga River because for maintenance of traffic reasons, ODOT chose to do some of the adjacent pavement and bridges within downtown. And those are some of the things that they've been working on this past summer where they've been shifting traffic back and forth. And while they've been replacing the decks on some of those bridges, they've been working on the foundations of the main span. These are some of the downtown bridges that they're working on. This is aerial view of the downtown bridges that basically goes from left to right. The first bridge in the very corner over here is East 9th. The next set of bridges are the ramps from 77. And then the third bridge is the ramps over East 14th Street. And all of those decks were replaced over the summer. From the Tremont side, you can see the progress. This is a view from Tremont looking north, so to speak. You can see the piers that are going in place. The average person wouldn't see this from the existing bridge, but this is the progress of the work that's being made. Similar view from the Gateway side, looking the opposite direction, you could see the piers that are coming out of the ground. Couple of things that I wanted to share with you that a lot of people, unless they've paid attention to this project, these are kind of bonuses that I say a part of this project. As you can see from this picture, the cold storage, which has always been a prominent structure when you're driving into town, that was demolished as part of this project. What happens is it opens up a very spectacular view of downtown. And if anybody travels on Abbey back and forth on this road, which I do quite often, it's a pretty spectacular view looking north to downtown. For this project, they created an overlook from Abbey to look over the city to see the downtown skyline, a park-like setting looking downtown. This is the rendition of what that park would look like. They incorporated the bike path that comes through the flats, comes down this hill and runs along the river. This is on the south side of Abbey. There's going to be fence parking underneath the bridge, which is what Tremont wanted. You know, during the conversations of the design, that they didn't have enough parking for events that they had. And this is a park that's going to be created as part of this project. And then this is actually the view that you see, and it's very construction-like right now. But you can imagine if this is a well-maintained overlook, it is a very spectacular view of the city from here, which we missed out on having the cold storage on that bluff right there. And this is what it looks like from the sky. It's a big hole that's being dug right now. Purpose of this, because of the instability of the slopes around the river, that slope is being cut back to stabilize it. The weight of the cold storage plus the steepness of the slope caused that slope to slip into the river and upstream. We have that same problem that ended up having to close one of the bridges by, I think it's Riverbend Road. So ODOT is taking care of the stability of the slope by cutting back this whole slope here as part of the project. On the other end, by the old fire museum, this is a picture of the old Central Viaduct that has been gone for many, many years. And again, creating an overlook into the valley. If you're standing at the old fire or at the fire museum, they're creating an outlook next to the bridge so you can look out. And this is a rendition of what's expected to look like in front of the old fire museum along the new structure. They're recreating parking, recreating a brick roadway and, you know, so that it's consistent with the fire museum and the rehab that's going on over there. It'll be more pedestrian-friendly in that area. And this is, again, keep in mind, this is right across the street from Progressive And this is what it looks like right now, which is the picture I like because I like construction. Now, that was the westbound bridge, an update on the westbound bridge. This is what I know as of today on the eastbound bridge. The original plans had called for the building of the westbound bridge in a, to the north or to the west of the existing structure. The plan was that we would build the new bridge, the westbound bridge. When that was complete, traffic would be moved over in both directions, eastbound and westbound traffic, to the westbound bridge. As soon as that happened, there was going to be a separate demolition project that the project would be sold, the contractor would be mobilized, that the bridge could start demolition the day after the traffic was moved over to the westbound bridge. That was a 30 million, that was proposed to be a 30 million demolition, $30 million demolition job. While demolition was going on, because it obviously couldn't happen overnight, the project for the new construction of the second bridge was to go on a very similar alignment to the existing bridge right now. Through the reevaluation of funding levels through ODOT, what had happened is they apparently pushed the construction of the new bridge out to 2023. My understanding is that they're trying to balance the budget, which I know from my experience at ODOT, the track funding was overpromised, overprogrammed. When we received it in 2007, during the Strickland administration, we worked very diligently on trying to balance that budget. It wasn't necessarily balanced, but we were making efforts to balance that budget. Now what's happening is they're basically saying there will be no negative numbers in their budget, and they're pushing their projects out to accommodate the new levels of funding. So some of the concerns that we have in the transportation business is the federal transportation bill. The majority of the funds that ODOT, that we get are federal funds through the federal transportation bill. They have been working on extensions in Washington, D.C. on our federal transportation bill. In essence, there's, usually those bills are six years, and, you know, they pass a bill and it's for six years. You kind of know what the funding levels are going to be for six years. Because we're just working on extensions, the extensions have been pretty consistent with previous year's funding, but they're just extensions. They're not long-term commitments on what the funding should be. So there's always been that concern whenever there's not a transportation bill, what's the funding levels? And if you pay attention to the conversations that are happening in Washington, the stories vary depending on, you know, what legislator is presenting a bill. Could be funding that's less than what we have now, could be funding that's twice what we have now. So there's a little concern because nobody knows what those levels are going to be. So there's a little bit of a concern right there for, you know, what ODOT's funding would One of the things that I've also noticed when I've reviewed some of the previous funding levels, this particular project is funded through the TRAC, T-R-A-C, which is Transportation Review Advisory Committee, I believe is what TRAC stands for. ODOT gets so much money from the federal government, and then ODOT distributes that money to different funding sources, how they feel appropriate. The majority of that money can go towards maintaining the system that we have, fix-it-first philosophy. And there's another thought process that says we should spend the majority of our money on improvements, increase capacity, which basically draws economic development. So you kind of have two schools of thought when you look at different spectums. Do you either maintain what you have or do you, you know, put a lot of money into new, improved widening of pavement? So you have those two extremes. Obviously, the balance is a balance between the two and not one or the other. After reviewing the budget from previous years to now, it seems that they're spending more money on the fix-at-first as opposed to put money into the track program. So there's less funding in the track, which causes these projects to be moved out. And that's what I see as one of the reasons why this project got moved out. Now, what happens if we don't build this bridge until 2023? There's basically two things that could happen. They could either move all the traffic to the existing structure, which means we reduce our capacity, our average daily, our capacity for our traffic to about, we reduce it by 30% because you basically have less lanes than what you have now traveling on one bridge. The other option would be to keep westbound traffic on the new bridge, keep eastbound traffic on the new bridge. But what would have to happen then is there would have to be more structural repairs done to the existing structure to get it to last to 2023. So there's those two options on what might happen. I'm not sure what ODOT is proposing to do in, if they push this bridge out to 2023, what, you know, what they would suggest would be the best option there. So in a nutshell, that's about all I know. I wouldn't take any questions from you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Germana.
I'm just wondering, if you have that slide presentation, do you happen to have the slides that were shown, the dramatic decrease in the gas allocation because of the, how it's gone down because of gas consumption has decreased? Is that there? I mean, I think that is a shocking graph to see how the amount of funding's gone, decreased because it's so many cents per gallon and with the efficiency of the vehicles, the funding is way down. So really, that is one of the big problems. I'm guessing that the United States funding is, is it based on gasoline tax?
It is. It's a fuel tax, and the slide that you're referencing was in a different presentation, same day on NAWACA, but it was a different presentation. But I know exactly what you're talking about. The revenues that the federal government, I guess, give to ODOT, but it's money that they take from Ohio with every gallon of fuel that's sold, there's a flat tax on the gallon. It's not a percentage. It's not indexed like a sales tax. It's a flat tax. The federal tax has not been raised since 1993. In addition to a federal tax, there's also a state tax on each gallon of gas. What happens is for each gallon of gas that's taxed, the money goes to Washington, D.C., and then it gets redistributed to the states. Ohio is one of the donor states that we collect more than we receive. It's based on population and need and a lot of other factors that I really don't know. That part of it has improved over many years. We used to be more of a donor state than what we have, have been. A good explanation for that is like in North and South Dakota, there's not a huge population over there, but they, as the United States, we still need a transportation system, a national transportation system. So more money goes into those states because they don't collect as much, but they still need, we still, as a country, need the benefit of a good transportation system through North Dakota and South Dakota. So that's an example. Unfortunately, we're paying for some of those states. So to Mr. Germana's point, because cars are becoming more fuel-efficient, the revenues are going down. People are not using their cars as much, they're biking, they're using the bus. Our revenues are going down. So we do have a decrease in the revenues, and that's all part of discussions that are happening in Washington, D.C.
Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a track decision?
Yes, to push the project.
To bump it out to 2023?
Yes.
And what influence does the governor have on track, if any at all?
He has appointed members of the track. Members of the track also consist of the Director of Transportation.
And this really goes back to 2003 when the project really started? That's when they projected the 2014, 2015 build. And then we get to 2012 and they're, okay, the money's not there. Is that, because you said it was overpromised?
Yes, for...
Initially.
Yeah. The track traditionally, and I'm trying to find the year that the track started, the track started quite a few years ago. And initially, you know, it was a balanced budget, but what happened is everybody realized that this was a good source to get some of your bigger projects done with. So there were a lot of requests, and they would continue to put them on the list and not, you know, say, no, this is not a good project. We're not going to fund it and bump it. So there were a lot of projects that were on the list and not enough money to pay for those projects. So back in 2007, when I was at ODOT, that was one of the struggling points that we had, is that we were supposed to, you know, build these projects that were promised, but we didn't have the money for it. So we tried to go through and systematically push some of those projects out a few years, not as dramatically as this, but, you know, maybe look at other sources of funding and readjusting some of how we were spending our dollars.
My history with track, or at least some of these fundings, was it would be probably wise to put a mall of some sort on the outside of Columbus, and you'd get all kinds of money and ramps and bridges and things like that. But are there other projects similar in size, and obviously not similar in size, but close to size, that have also been pushed back? That would be helpful to us to see exactly where all the pushback is. Is it, you know, are we being territorial and saying it's just us, or has this been spread out throughout Ohio? And if we could get that, I think that would be helpful in us formulating the direction and the tone that we might take with the administration.
Yeah. To answer your question, yes, there's many projects that have been pushed out across the state. It's not just in northeast Ohio and Cuyahoga County. My former counterpart, who was in District Four, they had the same situation of projects that were to go through the city of Akron. He was telling me the same thing happened, that they got their project pushed way beyond the funding, the limits of the funding. So it's happening across the whole state.
Thank you. Madam President.
Go ahead, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a couple of questions regarding the, I guess, the amenity projects, the Abbey Road and the two projects that basically are providing views to downtown. Are those associated with the westbound bridge project or are they separate?
The, there are some projects that, like the Abbey Road Bike Path are included in this project. The adjustments to the Lorraine Carnegie Bridge for the pedestrian bike access, that's a completely separate project. I believe that price tag was about $6 million. My understanding is that project is not on hold, so that will continue. There's some readjustments of, down closer to the flats, if you... Can you help? No, if they get that on the screen, the PowerPoint. If we look at this view right here, you can see this end over here, there's some adjustments to East 9th Street where some of the truck traffic can come off of East 9th and then go down to the river valley. Those are included in this project. But there's also some other parts of the project that are included in the westbound portion of the, of the eastbound bridge, I'm sorry, that are included in the eastbound bridge also.
But the Abbey Avenue will move forward?
Are you referring to the ramp connection or are you referring to the Abbey Road Bike Path?
The Bike Path.
The Bike Path will be included as part of this project.
Okay.
Just not to interrupt, but I'm having a little trouble getting them confused.
Mr. Brady.
Your microphone.
The westbound project and you refer to this project.
Right.
And I'm getting, sometimes I'm not sure which.
Sorry, the westbound is the current project that's under construction.
And then this project would be the other one.
Well.
I'm just saying honestly, I'm getting confused.
Yeah.
Can you use some kind of consistent?
I'll refer to the eastbound and the westbound.
Okay.
So the westbound is moving forward, it's funded, and we're looking good?
For the westbound structure, yes.
And the Abbey Avenue, you showed pictures of a park-like setting and grass being put in and the Bike Path. That's all still happening?
That is correct. That's part of the westbound project.
Okay. Is there any other amenity-type project associated with the westbound?
There's some muralscaping. If you look in the back underneath, at the abutments, there's some artwork project that's occurring on this project, on the westbound project, sorry, on the westbound project that will continue. Do you have a specific?
No, I wouldn't know.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, Ms. T. One, the eastbound project, as it stands, you mentioned that a possible option would be to make repairs to the eastbound bridge, or the eastbound, whatever you call it, to last us through 2023. Is there a price estimate or is there any idea of the reality of that happening? Or does it, in your opinion, does it look like the eastbound bridge in the next few years might have to be closed altogether? Or will we be able to, how long do you think the useful life of that bridge is?
When I was at ODOT and we were trying to extend the life of the existing trust structure, we spent about $10 million to extend the life of it for about five years. Whether that's a one-to-one comparison, if we, I don't think so. I think what will have to happen is the bridge engineers will have to prioritize some of the work that they see that needs to be done and monitor it even closely and make repairs accordingly.
Now, if the eastbound bridge, if we do make repairs to it or we find that the life of the bridge is another 10 years or so, we could have the westbound bridge open and operational as well as the eastbound bridge for at least some part of time?
The existing eastbound bridge?
Existing.
Yes, that's possible. That's one of the options.
Okay. That'll I have right now.
It was Mr. Germana and then Mr. Greenspan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The eastbound bridge, the east and the west, this is not bridges of convenience, this is safety in comparison to, say, a third lane in the turnpike. That's an expansion of convenience, it's not safety. And I understand that the reason that they were designing and even going to a new east and west bridge was safety. I even understand that there was such concern that the coroner actually was having some contingency plans if there was a disaster. And this is serious. What I'm wondering is, does this track have a point system where, I can understand that there's a shortage of money, but, you know, the point system for safety has got to trump points for convenience. And, you know, I'm just wondering, in your experience, have you heard where because of deteriorating situation, safety has trumped some convenience projects? because of deteriorating, uh, situation, uh, safety, has trumped, uh, some convenience projects?
That's, that's a very good question and, um, I actually looked at all the projects that are above the inner belt line, um, on the track project. The majority of those projects, the larger projects, there's some smaller projects, nickel and dime projects, so to speak. But when I look at the, the larger projects in, in other communities, like the Montgomery 75 Project, which is, um, through Dayton, um, it is just like you said, it's a capacity project. Um, they, they do have two large structures. Um, however, those structures are just deck replacements. It's a redundant structure. Um, our central viaduct is a non-redundant structure, which basically it, it means it has just two main cords that are supporting, um, the weight. Um, it, it's, it's a very intricate bridge because it's a truss as opposed to your run-of-the-mill girder bridge. Um, it's a little bit more tricky to inspect. Um, and ODOT spends a lot of money inspecting that, that bridge, as they should. Um, they're very in tune with, with all the, the ins and outs of, of, of that bridge. So, um, the reality is, is that, you know, you have a project in Dayton, that's a capacity project, that they're doing some bridge work, but it's not a critical infrastructure type of replacement. And that one is getting funded before the inner belt bridge project. One of the other projects that's ahead of the list, um, is a project in Cincinnati. Again, it's a, it's a capacity project. This morning I went on Buckeye Traffic, which is basically you can go on a map and you could see where there's congestion across the str- the state. And, um, you can pull up pictures and it shows you, red means that, um, you know, traffic is backed up and it's slow. Um, green mean that, that it's full speed. Yellow mean it's, it's somewhere, um, close to that. And I actually have those maps between the, the, the project in Dayton. And you can see this one, it's, it's yellow and green, which means the capacity is pretty good. So they're investing money in a project that is not showing any red. Right now, if you go to, um, our area, you can see that there's red in that area. This is taken the same time of day in the morning, during morning rush hour. You could see that there's red on the I-90, which is basically 90 flows into the, the, um, the inner belt there. So, um, this is, it's not only a safety problem with I-90, but it's also a capacity problem with I-90. And, and I guess I, my question to ODOT would be, you know, can you look at this list? Can you reevaluate based on, um, safety as you say? Um, and even the, look at the capacity and what, what the issues are in the, in the morning rush hour. You know, I have, I have colored pictures that, that show that, you know, we have more of a need here in this area. Granted, I might be a little biased, but, um, you know, I thi- I think it's worth taking another look and, you know, what's really the important project here? Ms.
If you could just answer that one part of the question. Have you, have you heard where safety concerns have moved the project up in, in your, uh, experience with, uh, with ODOT?
Yes, when, when I was at ODOT, you know, sa- safety is always the number one concern, that you will never compromise safety, um, if there's any fear of, of imminent danger. When I was at ODOT, we did have some concerns about some critical members of the, um, the, the inner belt bridge, the central viaduct. Um, we've repaired those in the meantime. That was the $10 million job. Um, you know, the bridge is still open, it has, um, a full weight capacity on it. But the, the key is, is you, you need to watch it very closely because, um, water deteriorates structural steel and it, it corrodes, um, very quickly. So you have to make sure that you're paying attention to, um, those areas where water is, you know, flowing on the structural steel, so it's not deteriorating. And we've replaced some of those, ODOT replaced some of those members in the past to, to increase the capacity. To answer your very specific question, um, yes, we have moved, moved projects up. The track has a specific scoring criteria, um, you know, that gives points for certain items. And, and I apologize, I can't remember if there was a, a safety measure in, in the track scoring system.
Mr. Greenspan? And then Mr. Miller.
Okay, thank you. All right, just, just so, so I'm clear, the westbound work is, will be completed as designed and spec'd.
That's correct.
Okay, and that, that will be in, in very good shape. The eastbound is the one that looks like the project, the projection is to be delayed 10 years. How, how, um, is it, it, will, will the, the eastbound bridge will be able to sustain? I think the answer is yes, but will, will be able to sustain itself through the next 10 years?
My personal opinion is that there will have to be some additional, um, structural steel repairs, um, wearing surface repairs, um, to, to get the, the bridge to last to 2023.
And are those nor- would they be considered normal wear and tear at this point on that, on a bridge of that age?
The bridge has reached its useful life.
Okay.
Um, it's beyond its useful life. The original design of the bridge was not meant to, to be in an environment like ours. It has a very flat deck, it has finger joints, um, and, and drainage troughs, um, very periodically. When you're in the middle of a snowstorm, um, and you want to get the snow off of the road, you usually put a, a blade down. Unfortunately, on this bridge, you can't because of the joints, you would rip them up so often. So if you want to get rid of the snow on the bridge, you put, throw more salt down. That's the reality of it. When you have salty water leaking on structural steel, it corrodes very quickly. So, uh, lessons learned from the past, we would never build a bridge like this in, in Ohio again. Um, but we, we have to maintain this structure. So again, um, you really have to look in specific areas to, to make sure that the bridge isn't deteriorating beyond where you're, you're getting into a safety issue.
Has, has the funding been affected for that type of work that you just mentioned? In order to continue the bridge's useful life, obviously beyond its years, as you've said, has that funding been impacted?
There was never any s- funding set aside for the maintenance, the continued maintenance of, um, the existing eastbound bridge, the existing bridge, I should say. Because the, you know, the thought process was that in, in 2013, the bridge would be closed.
Okay, let me, so let me just, I'm trying to, Mr. Germana had brought up a good, at least a visual in my mind, how I can explain this to people. So, in, in general, money goes into the federal government, it divvies it out to the states based on a formula. The revenues have been declining for various reasons, so the states are receiving less money. Yet the project plans have been continuing based on the expectation the revenue would remain flat. Is that, or remain the same or maybe even increase? I don't know. Is that a fair statement?
Um, a- a- again, when I was with the Strickland administration, we, we predicted low inflation rates and, um, level revenues. We didn't predict those revenues to go down, um, we predicted those to be flat. Um, and then at, at that same time, we had some concerns about our inflation rate with the construction too. Um, the, the, the bad economic times hit, that actually helped our construction projects and our construction, or, um, our inflation for construction projects, so that kind, we were able to build more projects because of that. Um, I'm not exactly sure what with, with this, what they're predicting as far as, um, revenue and inflation goes. If you give me one second here, I can look. Based on, uh, their, their financial statement for 2011, uh, they're predicting that the revenues between 11 and 12 will be increasing slightly.
And then what about, does it go beyond?
It does. There's a slight increase. Uh, it dips to the lowest about 2011 and then there's a slight increase, um, from 2012 on up to 17 is when they're showing.
Slight increase. So, so if the, if the revenue's fairly consistent, inflation and the economy is keeping construction costs down.
They're starting to go back up now.
They're starting to go back up. Then have the number of projects in the pipeline then started to increase? And that's why these cutbacks and programs are, are, are coming? Because some of these projects ta- take multiple years, so the revenue's got to be, got to be there in, in the out years in order to sustain it. Is that the, the, the crux of the issue as to why, um, projects are now being deferred?
That obviously would play a factor in, in it. Um, but I thi- I, I believe the real reason is, is really the overfunding, um, from, from many, many years.
Over, over commitment of projects?
Yes.
To, to, okay.
Yes.
And, and then that relates back to a change in, in planning strategy then? So, correct?
That's correct.
There was a strategy of just keep, the expectation is the revenue will be there, so we'll just keep built, you know, keep putting projects in the pipeline.
That's correct.
Now the prod, now the strategy is, we'll not effectively build to the revenue, but we'll build to the revenue, correct?
Correct.
Okay, the, um, I just have a quote, on, on the maps that you showed with the different colors between Dayton and, and Cleveland. And obviously we know that, that the bridges have cones and choke-down lanes in Cleveland. Do, do they have that in Dayton as well? I mean, are those really, were they accurate comparisons? Because we know that driving on the bridge, even at the best of times, you know, non-rush hour, you're going to have choke points.
Right.
Which may contribute to those, not, those colors turning red. If, does Dayton have the same issue or Dayton's roads wide open?
In, in Dayton, they just recently, um, finished Phase One of the Montgomery 75 Project. Um, and if you go onto Buckeye Traffic, you can actually see some of the, the videos that they have posted in that area. It's, it's pretty nice pavement, you know, nice ramps and everything. So there is one phase that's, that's already completed. Um, the project that they're proposing is called Phase Two, which is, um, it goes over two, two parts of the, the, um, I think it's the Little Miami that goes through, through Dayton. And it, the Little Miami kind of loops around and the interstate goes through that loop. So there's, there's two long structures, um, in that area.
The last, what is, what's the administration's position? What, what is the administration planning on doing based on where we are right now with the project? What, what's the al- what's the ultimate objective here? What is?
From the county executive?
Yeah, I mean.
Do you want to speak to that?
I'm sorry, Mr. Greenspan, I, I kind of want to wait to get questions from the floor and then we'll have Mr. Jurors come up.
That's fine. I didn't know that was going to come from Mr. Jurors. That's fine. I just didn't know, I, I just don't know where we're going with this. We're, we're getting.
Well, right now, where we're going with this, where I'm going with this, is I wanted to get a history of this project and to find out information and want to see where this council wants to go. So when we say you don't know where we're going, do you mean where the council's going or where the administration wants to go?
No, no, no. I, I was clear as to the purpose of today's meeting here for us, just as you stated.
Okay, well, I'd like to wait till we're done with hearing from my colleagues and then we can talk about the administration. But really, this is about what we're doing.
Okay.
Mr. Miller?
Madam Chair Director, uh, if we're not able to, uh, obtain a favorable improvement on, on the new schedule, who decides whether, which are the options we use? Whether we, uh, keep both bridges open or whether we, uh, squeeze all of the traffic onto the, to the new westbound bridge?
I, I would hope that we could be part of that conversation. I, I guess I would reach out, we could reach out to ODOT, um, to the local district and even down to Columbus, um, to get some, you know, our thoughts. I, I would assume that the city of Cleveland would want to be a partner in that conversation. We know the best of, from a transportation perspective, what, what's good for our community. Um, you know, they could supply the, the, the cost and whatnot, uh, you know, but I, I think we should be a part of that conversation.
And Madam Chair Director, uh, what's the status of the $30 million project for the demolition? If, if we decide that we're going to put all the traffic on the new, uh, uh, westbound bridge, would the, uh, old bridge still be demolished shortly thereafter? Or would we wait until, uh, we're pretty close to the construction time for the, for the new eastbound bridge?
On the, uh, the, the schedule, the demolition was, was pushed from 2014 to 2018. However, I was just talking with, with Tom and he had heard that they had moved the demolition back to, um, even further to 2018. Um, the reality is that if you're not, if you're going to move traffic off of the bridge, off of the existing bridge, sorry, the existing bridge, um, you can demolish it at any time. You know, whether you want to wait until just before the new, the new construction of the eastbound bridge starts or, um, do it right away.
Madam Chair, Director, the estimated 230, $320 million cost for the eastbound bridge, is that in 2014 to $15 or in 2023?
Neither. From the previous track list that was scheduled for construction in 2014, they had it shown as 390 million. Um, on the new list, it's shown as 320 million in, in the year 2023.
Madam Chair, Director, how did they save 70 million on a project that they're, they're going to build 10 years later when costs are presumably more?
I can't answer that question.
Madam Chair Director, uh, do you know why the estimated cost on the eastbound bridge, whether it's 320 or 390 is more than the 287 for the westbound bridge?
I would have to guess, it probably depends on the, the other work just beside the, the span. Like I showed in the picture before, that, um, the, the main span structure is just part of the whole project. So depending on the other type of the work, the road project, the bridge replacements, um, there's, there's other costs that are associated with that. And, and actually, I think one of the reasons, originally for the westbound structure, the original estimate was well over 300,000 or $300 million. Um, because we did a value-based design-build project, we, and it was done at a time where, where contractors were, um, very competitive in their prices, that we, we got a really good price for the 287. A lot of people were surprised, including contractors, uh, how inexpensive the bid price was for the, the westbound structure. The estimates that they're using right now are based on, on normal construction estimates. To answer your previous question of how we could save $7 million, as they do more and more of the design, um, you can get more accurate on your estimates. Um, that might have been one of the reasons why the cost is cheaper, I don't know. But usually when we. reasons why the cost is cheaper. I don't know. But usually, when we estimate projects, there's standard practices on, you know, what units cost that you use for certain items of work. I think the reality is, we got a really good price on the westbound structure.
Okay. Madam Chair Director, assuming now that 2023 is not cast in concrete, my question is, is whether there is a process in place for appeals of what was announced regarding the track decisions, and if so, what's the process, and how would we appeal the decision that was announced?
The track process has public hearings where they can hear concerns on projects and projects list and priorities, and I would recommend that, you know, we take advantage of those public meetings. Also, take advantage of working with the local district and venting our concerns with the priorities. But ultimately, you know, it's the track board's decision on how they prioritize these projects.
Madam Chair, final question. Director, how much did the federal stimulus program help us in terms of getting other projects that were urgent and would have competed with the Interbelt project to get them completed?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, Madam Chair Director, when the stimulus program was put out three years or so ago, there were, there were, a lot of money was put into roads and bridges, and there have to be other projects that might have competed with our project if it weren't for the fact that it was possible to fund them using stimulus money. And my question is, is how much help did the stimulus program provide in terms of reducing the backlog of urgently needed projects around the state?
I guess the best way to answer that is, traditional year for ODOT before the stimulus, they usually sold about $1.2, $1.3 billion worth of projects across the state. Peaks and valleys a little bit. During those years of the stimulus projects, ODOT sold over $2 billion worth of projects. So there were a lot of projects that got built that were moved up because of the stimulus money.
Okay. Thank you. Sounds like we need some more stimulus money.
It's my business. I'd be more than happy to build more projects.
Right. I'm sure you would. The westbound bridge, if the, if all the traffic is moved over to the westbound bridge, did I understand you correctly to say earlier that, I'm trying to remember this, that you, that there would be 30% less capacity than the existing bridge now holds? You, at one point, just a few seconds ago, when you were talking about the appeal process and stuff, you seemed to have some confidence that that's worth pursuing.
Never hurts to ask.
Never hurts to ask. Okay. And then at one point, you said, you know, you know, when the councilman asked where the decision would be made, you said that you thought and hoped that we should have some kind of influence over that, and that we know what's best for the community.
As far as the, moving all the?
As far as what our options are and what would happen. You obviously have, you know, a lot of background in this. Are you, can you, is it appropriate for you to hazard a guess to tell us what's best for our community? Do you feel like you have enough information at this point to do that?
No, I don't think I do.
So you just meant that in general?
Yes. Yes. You know, I guess, me as an engineer, particularly me as a bridge engineer, you know, I would look at the needed repairs of the existing structure to get it to 2023. And that including additional inspection, and it wouldn't be just a one-shot project where we improve it to get us to 2023. It would be ongoing projects to get us to 2023. I don't know what those costs are right now. And the other option is, as a traffic engineer, you look at traffic flows. You know, if we do move traffic to the new westbound structure, are there other things that we can do, other routes that we can detour traffic to? Some of those are already addressed in the projects by, on I-90, when you're going eastbound, they have, they widen the bridge ramp that curves around, and right before it attaches into the Interbelt project, so that it carries two lanes, rather than just the one traditional, forcing some of the traffic to go across the 490 bridge and up 77. That was already done when they had the detours with the bridges. More ideas like that you would have to look at, that if, you know, you're moving all the traffic over to the westbound bridge, what can you do to get traffic away from that area and onto other routes?
Madam Chairperson, to the director, I'm not a traffic controller, that's for sure, a traffic engineer, but it just seems logical to me, tell me if I'm not right, that we're going to be backing up traffic, and traffic will be much slower coming in and out of town. And that seems to be a pretty unacceptable position for a city the size to be in. And if there's a lot more traffic on that bridge, are we going to, I mean, without knowing that much about it, are we going to end up in 2023 after we get the new eastbound bridge finished, have to turn around and do something with the westbound bridge?
As far as the last part of that, hopefully not. You have to keep in mind that the wear and tear of structures aren't because of the cars that we drive every day. It's more the truck traffic than anything else.
What's the age of the existing, Madam Chairperson, Director? What's the age of the existing bridge?
I believe it was built in 1959.
Well, just finally, that's, it's very helpful. I don't know what point, if any, today, we're going to talk about the turnpike, you know, or not. Because I don't, I mean, I hear things. I don't know anything about it. I don't have an opinion on it. I mean, I have an opinion on the turnpike. As a former legislator, I had an opinion on the turnpike. But I don't know if that's going to be part of our discussion today or not.
Thank you, Mr. Brady, for asking. Mr. Ed Jurst is here to talk about the turnpike as it relates to our discussion on the bridge. But first, I want to hear to my left to see if either my colleagues have any questions from this. I do. Before we move on, I think it's an oversimplification to say that simply because there was an overfunding of projects, that this particular project has been halted in the, as it relates to the percentage of the completion, as we said. I think that's oversimplified. There, for sure, probably were projects that were looking and planned to be funded, but this particular project, its importance to this area, northeast Ohio, to Cleveland, to the county, is vital. And the choice in deciding to defund this is what's important, you know, because there's other projects that have been and will be funded with this pot of money. And what I heard was that the funding's not even going to be flat. It's going to be going up. Inflation's going to impact the cost of construction. But there were decisions made about which projects were going to go forward. So what's important to me, as I sit here, is I would, I want to determine how this decision was made. I understand it was by this, ultimate decision was by the track board? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And how many people, if you know, serve on the track board? General, in general?
Six or eight.
Okay.
Nine? It's nine. Thank you.
Thank you. Are all nine members appointed by the governor?
Yes.
Okay.
Governors over time.
Governors over time. So are there some holdovers from previous administration, or are all nine members now appointed by the current governor, if you know?
I believe there's holdovers.
Holdovers. Okay. So part of what I would like to know, and maybe you're not the person to bring this information, but I would like to know what the composition is of that board, and whether they're, who is appointed, and the scoring criteria. I understand there is some type of scoring that the track board undertakes, and whether we can get copies of that, the scoring criteria. And I'd also like to see, you gave a brief description of at least one or two other projects that are sustaining their funding. I'd like to see how they scored, and who's going to continue on with their projects, and what level of completion they're at. And what could ODOT offer if they were to come before us, or willing to come before us, in terms of these questions that I'm raising? Would they be the individuals that would be able to answer questions, or to be influenced? I mean, they have public hearings, you said, right?
Yes.
When are those hearings going to be commencing?
I can get you when those are scheduled for.
Okay. What I would like to pursue is, once we get this information, is to see whether anybody from track would be willing to come up here to speak to our council, and as well as somebody from ODOT and NOAAAC, because NOAAAC has had an influence, or has stated opinions on this cessation of the project. Is that correct?
Yes.
And who from NOAAAC would be most appropriate for me to?
Sitting there.
Okay.
Ed Jurst was just elected as the president of the NOAAAC board.
Okay. Okay. So those are my questions, and if you're able to get me some information on that, we can move forward with how we want to go. Once, I'd like to get the governor up here, but I think that would not be likely that he would travel here. But I'm certainly going to extend, or ask our president to extend an invitation to our governor to come up to at least offer up his position on this, this project. So I'm going to be doing that. Thank you. Sure.
Madam Chair Director, what is the expected completion date for the westbound bridge?
Madam Chair, while the director's looking for that information, you know, we have a tremendous, tremendous asset, and Mr. Jurst being the president of NOAAAC board. And I really think, you know, he will be able to get that information about how the decline of revenue for highways, because it's shocking. People just don't know that the funding for highways has gone down by that much. I know we're conserving on gas, but I was shocked when I saw those graphs. And I think, you know, for us and for the public, it's good information to know.
Okay. Thank you very much. Director?
Councilman Miller, it's fall of 2011, or 2013, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Jurst.
Good afternoon, Chairman Simon and members of the committee at the hall. I'm Ed Jurst's Director of Regional Collaboration, and has just been indicated in the new president of NOAAAC. I am here today to talk to you a little bit about the Turnpike project, and the issue of leasing the Turnpike, the tie-in here. I think it's important that you know what's going on with the Turnpike generally, but the tie-in to what the presentation that Ms. Hewin just gave you is that there was some suggestion that the delays on these projects were designed to prompt approval of the suggestion that, or the option of privatizing the Turnpike. Whether that's the case or not, I don't know, but some people speculate that that's part of the process. What I've passed out to you is some background that NOAAAC, NOAAAC study of the Turnpike leasing options. So the background on this is that as a candidate, Governor Kasich raised the possibility of leasing the Turnpike in a long-term lease as a means of raising a substantial amount of money to offset the deficit the state was facing. The recent budget bill, House Bill 153, authorized the Ohio Office of Budget Management to enter into a contract for the provision of public services relating to the Turnpike. In other words, gave the green light for the OBM director to potentially ask for bids on a leasing of the Turnpike, although the Senate added a provision that would require that the proposed, request for proposals come back to the Senate for approval, and if it was approved within 90 days, then they'd be authorized to issue that publicly. So they've kind of set the table to authorize the possibility of a lease. NOAAAC, responding even earlier than the budget bill, undertook a staff study to look at, what are the, what's the history, what are the precedents, what are the options, pros and cons of a potential leasing of the Turnpike. And these are done under what are called public-private partnerships. They're, you lease it to a private entity that gives you a front load of money, and then they become the proprietor of the operation. There's two major models that you can look at in the country. One is the Chicago Skyway, which connects the Dan Ryan Expressway right by Chicago there to the Indiana Toll Road. That was leased in January of 2005 to the Skyway Concessions Company. It was a 99-year lease that brought in $1.83 billion. The Skyway Concession Company is responsible for all operating and maintenance of that expressway, or the Skyway, but it also has the right to collect all tolls and all concession revenue along the Skyway. A much larger lease was the Indiana Toll Road, which was leased, this is the Indiana Turnpike, leased in June of 2006, to statewide mobility partners for 75 years and $3.8 billion. The reason you do, the communities or states have entered into these agreements, is to raise money in the short run. The downside is that the revenue gained is a one-time revenue source. It'll be gone in a short term, while the lease will go on for generations. In 2006, candidate Ken Blackwell had proposed the possibility of a $4 to $6 billion lease. I don't know if he had a contract with those lines, but that was what he was projecting out. There was a study done by Ned Hill, who many of you know from Cleveland State, and David Ellis, who was with the OBM under Governor Strickland. They found, their conclusion, there was no compelling monetary benefit to Ohio for that type of a plan, and again, focusing on the fact that it was one-time money. A second reason potentially to privatize a Turnpike is to transfer the operations and maintenance to the private sector, so offload those personnel costs, just like you might do with privatizing garbage collection or whatnot. It wasn't really a factor. That reason was not a factor in the Chicago Skyway. It just was not something they considered. They were looking more at the money, the influx of money. In Indiana, it was a major factor, but they needed extensive road repairs and maintenance and capacity increases and tolling improvements in Indiana. The only other way that they were going to do this, I found this interesting as you look through the materials, the only other way that they could have done that maintenance was to raise the tolls, but they kind of offloaded that difficult political decision to the private company. So they leased the Indiana Turnpike to the private company, and those, that company has doubled tolls as of 2010 from the pre-leased level. So rather than bite the bullet and raise the? So rather than bite the bullet, and raise the tolls, the public officials leased the Turnpike and let the private company raise the tolls. In Ohio, by contrast to Indiana at least, the Turnpike has been self-funding, and has handled its maintenance and tolls, and recently put in an EZ Pass system. If you, so they're doing things, they've always, they've done, they have a debt, there is a debt there, but they, on a year-to-year basis, they've been able to operate at a profit. And now with EZ Pass, they've streamlined their toll takers. Now, if that were done, and if that was offloaded to a private entity, the profits from the more efficient operation would simply go to the less E. We can fund the needed improvements now. The risk of a lease is that either the maintenance may go down, or the tolls may go up. There's also an issue that the NOAACA staff looked at about traffic diversion. Now, in Chicago, with the Skyway, and in Indiana with the toll roads, there were no options other than those particular roads. So you couldn't realistically take a truck and say, well, the tolls have become too high, so I'm going to move to an alternative state route. Ms. Heewin and I actually, for the last few years, served on the Turnpike Commission, and that was always an issue, because the more you, you know, Ohio, you have a lot of alternative routes. So that a truck riding on the Ohio Turnpike, if they decide that the tolls are too much, they can go off to a side route, a parallel route along the Turnpike, but that has an impact on the roads, and that increases the state's maintenance requirements. One model showed that if you double the tolls on the Ohio Turnpike, you can move as much as half of the traffic, truck traffic, to alternative routes. Now, that creates safety issues, because you have trucks traveling down roads that might not have been designed for a lot of truck traffic, and you also have maintenance, increased maintenance costs, and those are borne by the state rather than a private entrepreneur. The conclusion that the NOAACA staff had was that it may take years or even decades for Chicago and Indiana to decide if they'd made the right call in the privatization of their roads. They found few possible merits and quite a few negative potential impacts of leasing of the Turnpike. In May, NOAACA passed a resolution, which is in the packet we supplied you, opposing the sale of the lease. They were also concerned about a redistribution of the dollars if you lease it. Currently, the money that goes to the, from the Turnpike, the revenues are designed to maintain the Turnpike itself, and also a small band alongside the Turnpike, so you can have onroads, offramps, and onramps can be maintained. One concern is that if you lease it, that pot of money will go down to Columbus and can be distributed anywhere. Now, recently, about a week ago, Greg Murphy, who is the Chief of Staff for ODOT, came and requested to meet, this was last Friday, to meet with some of ODOT staff, and I attended that meeting. He said that the study parameters, a consulting firm, KPGM, will be conducting this study, they hope to complete it by the end of the year, they're just beginning the study now. He requested, recognizing though that NOAACA had already had a resolution against leasing the Turnpike, he asked us to keep an open mind. They said that all options are on the table. Those would include doing nothing, selling or leasing the, at one extreme, selling or leasing, well, I don't think they're going to sell it, but they would lease the Turnpike, those are the two extremes. And then in between, other options would be turning the control or the governance from the Turnpike Commission, where it is currently, to ODOT. And another option would be to expand the territory in which Turnpike revenues can be spent. Again, I said that currently, you can only spend the revenues from the Turnpike on the Turnpike, or a narrow band adjacent to the Turnpike. What they are suggesting is maybe we extend that area down to Interstate 30, which I believe runs through Mansfield. Again, that would be a concern, obviously, to the folks along the Turnpike, because that would have an impact on the level of maintenance that you would have for the Turnpike, but it would also be redistributing that money southward to a greater expanse. So that, that is a concern. There are a couple of other areas who've done some preliminary looks at this proposal. The Toledo Metropolitan Area COG took no position, they basically said the study's underway, we want to be part of the study, we want to monitor it, but we're not going to take a position at this point. The Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study Group, which is basically the NOAACA of the Akron area, opposed the lease, saying that any benefits of leasing far outweighed the costs. There were, they said that a private company, currently, we're profitable, but a private company, if it wanted to get further profits, would have three options. One would be to increase traffic, get more tolls, that's unlikely to happen. Second would be to increase tolls, and third would be to decrease maintenance. Those other two options are not positive ones. The governor has indicated that he does not want a 75- or 99-year lease. He said that's way too long. He hasn't indicated, I don't believe, specifically where they would want to go if they do go in that direction. But the problem you have is, as you reduce the lease term, obviously, you're going to reduce the amount of money that's coming to the state, so that if you, if you're getting $3.8 billion in Indiana for a 75-year lease, if you cut that lease back to 50 years, presumably they would not get $3.8 billion. I don't know what the comparable numbers would be in Ohio, but obviously, a 50-year lease is going to get you less money upfront than a 75-year lease. So where does it stand today? We're obviously going to participate, to the extent we can, in reviewing and monitoring the study. I think the county executive is interested in talking to the other executives along the Turnpike path, to find out if, what their views are, and to work with them, to have a position for northern Ohio on this very critical issue. So a lot of this stuff, and, you know, in response to, on the Interbelt Bridge, understand that we had the presentation that you saw today on January 13th, and Chuck, I think you were at that meeting, for NOAACA. The project director gave us that presentation with those timelines two weeks ago, or two or three weeks ago, and gave us no indication that there was going to be a delay in that project. He gave us the presentation on Friday, I believe it was either Monday or Tuesday, that you picked up the morning paper, and they said, we're kicking these things out.
Director Jers, if I may, who gave that presentation? Which director?
Craig Heberbrand.
Craig?
So, I mean, in sum, this is all kind of developing in real time about the Interbelt Bridge.
Okay. Any questions?
Happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair, to Director, if we, if the governor decides to lease, we won't really have any say on the tolls, correct? Or could that be put in?
Madam Chairman, Councilman Conwell, what the governor has said in response to concerns that were raised about Indiana, because Indiana has done this, and the experience there, I don't think, has been all positive. I think there have been maintenance issues, and there have been toll increase issues. And so what he has indicated is that he would like to include in any contract, maintenance requirements and toll caps. But that gets back to my point I just made, which is, the more you restrict the ability of the less E to, to get a profit, you require them to have certain maintenance, you require them to have certain, or limit their tolls, they're going to make less money, so they're going to offer you less for that lease. So you'd get less money in.
Mr. Gallagher.
Having a city that had to deal with the Turnpike, I think they will find that they're one of the hardest groups to deal with. Just the sound barrier issue alone, and Astronzo Berea area, really just proves to us what the Turnpike Commission is, and that's just a money grab. And when you say maintenance and things like that, if they were going to, if they were ever going to consider, and I told this to anybody that would listen, to lease that Turnpike, you better go to the communities that you've disrupted over all these years, and put up sound barriers, or at least have that part of the deal, because the Turnpike Commission has no interest in that. And as a matter of fact, I had a project where it was, it was moving just the sun, moon, and stars for us to plant trees at our expense for a buffer for the future for our people. And they, and they almost didn't let us do that at our expense. I mean, that's how difficult they are to deal with. So they may find, if they haven't already, that as they go up and down from, from, you know, east to west, that the communities that they, that they actually touch are not very happy with them. And they need to, if anything, to get out of this, they need to open up their ears. And I hope they get that message loud and clear, because they have been historically impossible to deal with.
Mr. Jers, and in the other states, the two you mentioned that privatized Turnpike, did all of the public employees, were they dismissed, or were they absorbed by the private company, if you know?
I don't know. I would assume that they probably brought in a lot of them over, just, that typically happens in privatizations.
I know. That's part of the goal, but I was just curious.
I don't know offhand.
Okay, thank you. Any other, Mr. Brady?
I just wanted to echo Councilman Gallagher's comments, to the extent that I don't think there's really almost any redeeming factor to the Turnpike Commission. It's not what, you know, there's, I've never, you know, seen it, you know, it's quite a fiefdom, and it must be an incredible history to it, because any time anybody gets near it, it's like, you know, people start to get afraid. But I've often wondered why the Turnpike Commission was allowed to just exist, and definitely, and why ODOT, you know, itself just didn't operate the Turnpike, I mean, beyond, beyond some of the obvious issues. So, you know, I'm certainly not, I see the problems with leasing the Turnpike that have been brought up, and don't disagree with those. But the Turnpike Commission itself, I mean, I think it has very little redeeming, you know, it's very difficult to defend.
Madam Chairman, Councilman Brady, one thing I would say, in the defense, at least, of the structure, I don't know about the actual, you know, individuals operating, although George Distel had been the most recent, one of our colleagues down in the legislature, was the most recent executive director prior to the change in administrations. But one of the things that you'd want to keep in mind, if, is the, the mission currently is that road, and that road only. If, if control is shifted to ODOT, their mission is maintaining the entire state. So part of the concern, I would think, would be ensuring that, again, those dollars stay in northern Ohio, as opposed to potentially going somewhere else.
And I guess, and that's not what we're even here, here about, but the flip side of that is, is that, you know, you know, some people might argue, some people might not, that ODOT, you know, can be, can be held more responsible, I mean, can be, you know, is more likely to be, is more likely to listen to the public than the Turnpike Commission.
These are just things, I think, that you need to consider as, I mean, they're issues that you want to explore.
Any other questions? Okay, any. I just want to conclude by saying that hopefully we'll get this information, and our president will be back, and I'm, I'm going to plan to probably introduce a resolution addressing the Interstate Bridge and/or the Turnpike issue, but definitely the bridge. I think it's going to have huge economic development consequences if, if the projected completion time remains in 23 and 10 years. So that's my position, and at this point, I don't know if my colleagues are ready to weigh in on that, but I think we'll get additional information, and I'll, I'll be bringing forth a resolution, and hopefully, individuals who can speak to that decision. Thank you, Mr. Jers.
Thank you.
Director Jers.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
You know, my concern is, you know, if we have to evaluate how much money we're going to be putting to keep that bridge in operation, and then it's, it's a bridge that we're going to be tearing down, it just doesn't seem to make sense to do that, especially since the bridge has reached its natural life. So.
It's beyond its life.
Yeah, yeah.
It's worse than that.
Strange, strange things. Here.
Okay.
Can we file a lawsuit or something?
I don't know, I'm gonna, I'm, you know, this, on a safety.
Just over safety issues?
Alone, safety issues, so we're going to be looking at everything. I'll be talking to our law director about that, too. Okay. And I don't have Ms. Laney's business, we'll just wait for President Connolly to get back to pursue this further, and hopefully have information in the next couple of weeks, we'll come back. I don't want too much time to go without keeping up with this. Any public comment, Madam Clerk? No, Madam Chair. Okay, so I'm going to move that we adjourn. Second, on favor, I, motion, meaning adjourn. Thanks for being here.